Good evening, Secretary. This meeting of the Elizabeth Planning Board, the script isn't here, so I'm going to save that for a few minutes. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and then call the roll, and hopefully by that time we'll have the script. I call this meeting the Planning Board's Order. This meeting was newly advertised in the Star Ledger, and I don't have the date in front of me, but it was by the Open Couple of Meetings at NJSA 40:10ish for the H1 headset. That wasn't in the script. Okay. And all the cases that we heard tonight were newly advertised in these 10 days before tonight's case. Pat Corbald.
Councilman Ballen.
Here.
Mr. Calley.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Nunez.
Here.
Commissioner Chalhams.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Corvado.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Secretary Ervin.
Here.
Chairman.
Here. Okay. Just the minutes of the March 1st meeting we have before you, but I will let the hang that motion to minutes. Moved by Commissioner Corvado, seconded by Secretary Ervin.
Councilman Ballen.
Aye.
Commissioner Calley.
Aye.
Vice Chair Winkler Ross. Commissioner Nunez.
Aye.
Commissioner Chalhams.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Corvado.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Secretary Ervin.
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye. Line zero minutes are accepted. Resolution that the four of us are PO 212-565-62 Broadway for Talia Development LLC. And motion. Motion by Commissioner Calley.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brown. I don't have any of this stuff in front of me today. It's really nuts. Pat Corbald.
Councilman Ballen.
Aye.
Commissioner Councilman.
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Chair Ross.
Yes, Liz. Who's the accent?
Commissioner Nunez.
Aye.
Commissioner Chalhams.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Corvado.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Aye.
Secretary Ervin.
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye. Okay. I just want to call if anyone's attention if they're here for PO 310-570-572 Newer Avenue at 570-572 Newer Avenue LLC. That issue, review comment, other business tonight has been withdrawn for a future meeting, so that will not be heard tonight. Mr. Angel, PO 112-5064 First Street, Lenis Supermarket LLC. What did you say? What did you say? I have 40 things to ask you on your side.
Good evening, Commissioner Calley. Welcome to the Act of the Supermarket LLC. The Act is the same blessing of premises of 5064 First Street. It's a necessary restoring, this is still in. It's the intention of the Act to establish a supermarket allocation which runs within the first floor, the basic restoring, and the surrounding areas which people develop into apartment and building areas. What are the requirements for this application? Do you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
And if you're going to need to connect to the supermarket area in the corner of the street,
Yes, sir.
Is there a mention of a supermarket allocation?
Yes, sir.
The lot size is 200 by 100. It's a 100 feet long first street. Two storey, and in front of stores or areas.
Yes, sir.
And you intend to first floor supermarket, and you mean to increase the percentage of storage?
Yes, sir.
You're also providing for Wall Street parking, Wall Street building area?
Yes, sir.
Now, I should introduce this work for Russell Sanders.
Yes, sir.
And it's very important, we call it operating supermarket in San Luis, San Luis Obispo.
Yes, sir.
Didn't ask you, we're called manager of department. You have acknowledged that this is Elizabeth's address.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm afraid that I don't have a professional.
Uh huh, yes, sir.
Now, for our state operation business, can you tell me what an operational operation you're doing?
Say, hey, morning to night. Yeah.
Make some idea?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah. And any comments from Russell and Morning to 12?
Uh, 15.
15. And will those ever loading around?
Yes, sir.
That's our model, this supermarket offering. Morning, since we're here.
Yes, sir.
Now, please next, and know that we provide plenty to the Wall Street parking spaces. One of them, you can access.
Yes, sir.
And the most, the main, the ball, the third area.
Yes, sir.
And would be from the side of the corner?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Russell Ford, do you need three cars for us?
Three vehicles. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Usually I'm heard without my microphone by myself. Yeah. Okay. Now, let me rephrase your question. Deliveries being made mostly by straight body trucks and expecting traffic there on that site. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You've also provided for private work pickup. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you had to say having pickups at least two to three times a week?
Yes, sir.
You've also been explained that if the city engineer requires new parking, strike that new sidewalks around the perimeter, not the rear.
Yes, sir.
Sidewalks. And you're also going to provide plantings along both hearing faces in accordance with the development quarters?
Yes, sir.
If the board approved this application, is your attention to store renovations and decision to pull permits?
Yes, sir.
I have nothing for it, sir.
Commissioners, you've heard of this Lenis's testimony. Are there any questions to this witness?
Mr. Chair Councilman? What direction did you say the... My question, what direction did the truck actually was coming in?
There would be no truck.
No truck.
Straight body trucks. They're coming in early in the morning, and the loading area is off of Fulton.
And they'll be coming down First Street or down Franklin Street? I don't know.
Everybody can tell you when they're coming.
What's the funny about the trucks?
Wait.
Wait, the trucks, four, gonna go four times?
Would you know how big the trucks will be?
It'll be eight body trucks. I don't know how big the...
Straight body, I wouldn't know the time for the first way to those trucks.
I have a question. Perhaps I missed one. Where are the location for?
Captain Councilman? You should pull that mic closer where you want.
Captain, eh?
Pull the mic closer.
I'm sorry. Just one other question. Where's location for your refuse storage? I didn't understand that.
Yes, sir.
No, is that correct?
It looked by the loading area.
What area?
The refuse storage area is the rear of the property along Franklin Street. Sorry. Located near the loading dock. You're okay.
Councilman, you done?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Rules is the chairman. He's like one of the operational officers of this supermarket.
89.
89. What constitutes the senior of the council deliveries early in the morning?
How early do deliveries come in?
Uh, 6:30. 6:30 deliveries? Yes, sir. Starts from what time is that? 8 o'clock?
8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Uh, that sample? Excuse me, that sample time for your deliveries?
Is there enough time to get your deliveries in? 6:30 to 8:00?
Uh, yes, sir. There won't be any traffic blocking or anything?
Uh, there is. You know, we have, if you look at the plans, we have an entrance off of Fulton and exit up Franklin. So you have queuing space. Even if it's more than one truck, there will be queuing space on site. So the theory is that there shouldn't be any off-site issues in regards to parking or regards to...
You answered my question, right? The flow of traffic for the delivery is from Fulton to Franklin.
Right.
The queuing wouldn't be a problem because obviously it would take place before the heat of body in the storage. There are four parking spaces out there for the tenants in the building.
We don't, we're not renting here to, to apartments. Well, we do not have any control, but we're not trying to put...
Are they occupied at one time?
Uh, for the one year. They are.
They are. So that possibility exists that they had cars to park in the storage spaces?
It's conceivable, Mr. Corvado.
Would there be a problem if there's a truck loading and one of these cars tries to get out of there?
It's conceivable.
So I assume the driver won't be that far away and have to drive from the lot to the shop?
It's a matter of getting these competing interests. We want to provide, we need...
If 6:30 or 8:00 people are going to work, well, that's a delivery company, and that happens.
Oh, but in that case, they can also park. They can also park.
So in other words, this can test that tenant spaces will not be required for tenants overnight?
No, we're showing four spaces because two apartments require four spaces, even though this particular redevelopment zone, no parking is required.
So one of the other questions I have here, and I don't know if this is the right one to answer. There is a retail space on the floor. Is that... Victor, is that something we allow here in town? Retail on the second floor?
It's not rented at this time.
Okay, but next week you could...
Then have to come back here, I suppose.
As far as I know, the chairman doesn't have restrictions on retail on the second floor.
There are no restrictions?
Yeah, normally people don't require western.
But this is retail space over there. So what happens if someone wants to rent it in a month? They do have to come back here?
No, because the zone does not require parking in this zone. And you want to issue free, uh, just to work out the four parking spaces? Chairman could find out an issue without four parking spaces along that. I'll work with the right of the relocation refuse area away from that driveway and move the driveway a little bit up Franklin Street. It wouldn't be a concern there, so I think by relocating the refuse area.
In other words, you're going to move the refuse area and you're going to open the driveway up so those cars can pull straight out?
Could pull out and follow the people there. Maybe, uh, it can be arranged, there's nothing...
We're also going to talk about that refuse area being enclosed as we've requested recently?
Yes.
The trailer would be enclosed.
No, enclosed, roof, four walls and door. Do you have any other questions?
I have.
My name is Christopher Zender. His name is Z E H N E R. My professional address is 215 Jefferson Avenue, Elizabeth.
You have a project on Christopher Zender as both an licensed architect and newly minted licensed manager.
And engineer.
And engineer. Would you like to tell us about your credentials as to where the newly minted portions are?
Okay.
Whether your licenses are as an architect?
My licenses as an architect are current. I became a PE nine months ago by examination. It's a national exam. The State Board of Engineers reviewed my professional qualifications and work experience, acquired references from engineers I've worked with and under. As far as the PE credential that was also to pay exam, it's a Jersey state exam regarding plan or...
As well.
As well. And all those licenses are...
Here, that's an architect before this award, and we welcome you for your credentials and exam.
Thank you.
Mr. Zender, you prepared your site planning application?
Yes.
And would you describe the site?
Site is 200 feet wide, 100 feet deep. It's between Fulton and Franklin Street. Main frontage is First Street. It's 20,000 square feet, a little under an acre. It's four, almost five acres an acre. It's a zone C2 neighborhood commercial. It's in Homestick's redevelopment district, so those requirements govern. There's existing two-story building on the site presently with adjacent vacant lot. And there's a three-story component as well. There's also a three-story component. It's a two- and three-story building.
Could you describe the surrounding business?
Uh, yes. Directly across the street, on First Street, we have Elizabeth Public School number 28. Along First Street, we have additional C2 neighborhood commercial in the form of retail and some mixed residential, some residential as well. And then behind this property, we have R3 Zone, which is multifamily housing.
What we're proposing here is permitted?
This is permitted use.
Could you describe the proposal on that list?
Uh, the applicant seeks to take 7,600 square feet total on the first floor and create a supermarket. Presently, that requires a twerket square foot addition for an airlock or vestibule. Inside the space, the applicant will be providing some up-to-date ADA compliant bathrooms, a small manager's office, and the majority of the space will be open before plan for retail, for retail displays and racking. There is a loading area that exists presently, and that's mostly at the second and third floor, as you've heard prior or earlier, that's going to include some type of vacant retail space. And there are two apartments as well. They are not part of this application. This applicant does not own the building. He rents, he will be renting it, and that's by the landlord.
The basement area is used for storage?
The basement area will be used for storage.
Um, what variance do you suggest in connection with this application?
There is a variance in front setback. What's required in this six district is a zero-foot setback. This would be from Fulton Street. What exists presently and was proposed is 90 feet extensions. This is due to the fact that the existing adjacent lot is just a gravel lot. It's been used for parking for a number of years. There's nothing there. We're not proposing any significant extension or addition of the building. That's the one bulk setback. There was a second variance that we had posted for, which was for maximum impervious coverage. The allowed impervious coverage in the zone is 90%. We have 95%. Due to some suggestions from the city engineer, we are going to comply with the 90% by reconfiguring our parking lot. So we'll not reduce the parking count. It will just reduce the amount of impervious surface and provide for some orgreen space on Fulton Street. Keeping in mind that parking is not required in this district, but we feel that is a benefit to the supermarket use and the applicant desires.
At the present time, the site's under development, is that correct?
That is correct.
What proposed site developments shown in our plans?
If the planning board chooses to approve this application and will bring this property into compliance with the Elizabeth Site Development Standards by providing paving, striping for the parking spaces, curbing, you stop, you stop walks around the property, there will be soil water management in the form of a drywall. There'll be landscaped and lighting as well.
Now, there are some concerns with regard to the possibility of additional sign variance. We were to maintain a sign that was 30 inches wide, and the applicant has agreed to use it to 24 inches so that the variance would not be required, is that correct?
That's correct. The applicant's prepared to comply with the city ordinance for signage. 24 inches of the maximum line.
And the barber consultants report discussing gaps in lighting coverage left in reference to the final plan.
Yes, what we'll do is to fill in those gaps. We will shift one of the lighting poles over and we'll provide a couple of wall packs on the building to fill in those two spaces. Oh, wall packs.
Now, Mr. Zender, from a planning standpoint, is this thing good use for each area?
It is. Homestick's looks to create diversity in the form of fixed uses, increase density in underutilized urban areas, activate the street corridor by pulling the buildings forward, with the trade-off being that you have, as parking, it's considered to be a mix of automotive, but also highly, a mix of automotive as well as pedestrian circulation pattern. The emphasis is on trying to increase density and provide a walkable area in the city so that within a couple of blocks of where you reside as well, you can provide, you can find uses such as this.
Are you familiar with any supermarkets in the area of this size?
There are not, there may be a few blocks away, some very small corner markets. There's nothing in this range in terms of neighborhood supermarkets. This would be a welcome use, I believe, for most of the residents. There's a lot of density in the form of housing within a couple of blocks of here. This would provide jobs and provide people with a walkable or short drive, within a short drive, they could be getting off on the grocery.
Should the board approve this application? Now, it's your question of the negative impact on structures or the neighborhood?
There would be no negative impact. In terms of negative criteria, this application, I feel, does not provide any detriment to public good. It does not pair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance or the master plan. This would be a real asset to the neighborhood.
It is certainly consistent with redevelopment requirements of that particular zone, correct?
Yes, sir.
I have nothing for it, sir.
Commissioners, you've heard Mr. Zender's testimony. You have any questions? Commissioner Brown?
Chairman, I have a question. Has anyone looked into the, with a school being so close by, did anyone do a survey on the flow of the traffic with the school buses?
We, we do not have any concerns about traffic regarding the site and the JCC of the school because if you look at the ingress, the ingress from our site, the aprons, they're well enough away from any queuing that would occur in front of the school in terms of school buses. And we have our own off-street parking, and frankly, it's not required. We're running something that I think will be an asset.
Or traffic for 90%?
Yeah.
So what are the thoughts on First Street?
There wouldn't be any appreciable parking, no sense of backing up or, you know, queuing.
Are you appreciable parking?
I don't feel that there'd be any appreciable issue with parking on First Street in the form of queuing or backing up that area of the street because as, as Alan mentioned, the traffic would be coming off on the side streets.
A question in that school, and I don't know if anyone can answer that. With the changes in the school schedule all over town, what are the hours of the school? Does anybody know that? When the schools start there?
I think I can answer that question. I think the operation happens in the school from 7:30 until 4:00 p.m. I know there's congestion there in the morning because parents do drop their students off, their children on, on the South Street side, and they exit off Franklin and off Fulton Street. Also, there is a busload that goes in that area. Buses actually enter through South Street and exit.
But you just said something. We're interested. The school starts at 7:30, which means that the supermarket doesn't open until 8 o'clock. So by that time in the morning, the students should be in school. So the danger. The trucks come at 7:00, 6:30, so that is before the rush to the school. And 4 o'clock, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, you know, people will be coming and going to the market. But I would foresee that the majority of the residents probably walk to this market. But, you know, that's the tangent. It can be different.
I would also offer in terms of traffic that this is not, not being considered to be a high turnover volume use, such as a, you know, fast food restaurant or a bakery or a convenience store where people either have drive-throughs or the store's limited to a couple thousand square feet, and you go in there to get coffee or something like that, and you're backing up. People that would be shopping here are already beginning their meats, their produce, their dry goods. You're probably talking about, on average, maybe 20 to 30 minutes here per carload where people would most likely fit their shopping experience into their day. It's not something that's focused at one particular time, which is why they have hours that are so broad in the day. It's probably a fairly regular, but distributed use of that parking lot.
Sure. Thank you for that information. Commissioners, any other question?
I have a question.
Commissioner Corvado?
I don't see any recommendations from the fire department, and I don't see any made on site for fire truck.
As far as recommendations in the department, they get all this paperwork just like every other department?
I don't understand, but I don't see any...
Question on that?
Miss, do you see?
Building split? Building? I believe is split, or it doesn't matter because it will have to be for, for the use. So I don't know if it's going to have to be split? Yes. And that's going to include basement, first floor, second floor? All, all, yeah, yeah. And frankly, what was there has a bearing in what will be required because the splitter head orientation has to be oriented, has to be aligned with the partition layouts and the aisle rack. So... One of the suggestions there is that if, if we should approve this application, we need this preliminary?
Preliminary final.
It'll be a preliminary, and then we will reach out to the fire department before the final's taken. Should the fire department agree?
Thank you.
Councilman, Mr. Jefferson, just one last question. On the schematic on SB 7, I noticed that they're talking about a proposed bus parking. What side of the bus are they talking about?
The applicant was going to provide a minivan service to pick up people that were too far to walk and had it on a wheel. So one of the proposed parking spaces would be occupied.
So one of the proposed parking spaces would be occupied by that shuttle that would allow them to extend the range of the supermarket.
It's supposed to be used in that area?
Right, because show on the plan is an 18-foot lot space, just like all the automobile space. So it's probably a-
It's a van, it's a minivan.
A minivan.
A minivan?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would mean that somebody would call, phone the service space for the supermarkets. Yes, and it would be a market discussion.
You saw you had to provide parking for a shuttle bus, that was the statement?
That will pick up the people, bring them to shop, and then bring them back to their homes.
Okay, if you were somewhere beyond what you felt comfortable walking, get a call in the supermarket and they would provide that service to you. They would pick you up, take you there in the minivan, and then bring you back to your home.
Okay, good, okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, is there any other questions? Chairman, there are been a number of employees that they would have here. You mentioned that early on in the question, my son, my son's getting teenage, and hopefully many of them from the neighborhood so that they can walk to work. I have one quick question. Is this one lot or is this more than one lot?
No, it's actually one-on-one tax account. One of the recommendations is that we can, uh, Corvus, that they can consolidate it, but that's something I need to be ordered. I can't, the applicant can't speak to the owner.
So while we're hunting around between the liberators, the file, hopefully come up with a solution for that. Because obviously it would make a great deal of sense to have this consolidated. Got it, thank you. Mr. Benet, do you have any comments?
That was just a brief contact with Mr. Zender. I'm meeting with him, we can figure the parking lot will relocate the refuse area in the driveway on Franklin, and also I'll contact Mr. Mark Chai to the fire department to make sure if he has any concerns, we'll be addressed. Only the concerns are to keep the area near the new front entrance way, the airlock area with the addition that Mr. Zender predicted. Keep that area ready for fireworks itself. Before we reconfigure the parking lot, if we do, I'd like to meet with Mr. Mark Chai.
Any other questions, comments? Is there any one in the audience who has any comments regarding this application? Just come forward, one of the commissioners.
State your name, your birthplace, your birthplace.
Yeah, hold it right here.
My name is Santiago Madaleno. Santiago Madaleno. Santiago Madaleno. S.A.N.T.U.I.S.N.E.L.U.N.E.S.N.E.L.U.N.G.O. Madaleno's name. 136, 52. All right, counsel, about the, um, about the school, the school's right there. The kids start from 7 to 8, 8 o'clock. That area is always, yeah, that area is always busy, always busy. You got trucks coming through there, everything. Parking over there, there's no parking at all whatsoever. People that are upstairs, yeah, people that are upstairs. People upstairs and that, and that building that went down. The area is always, always full of cars. There's no parking there. There's always a lot of kids out there. It's uncomfortable because the kids be all, they're everywhere walking there. Now, we got a baseball field in there. That's so, the school buses be going over there all the time, like, no kids need to play baseball. Now, we got, the store down the street is 1, 2, 3, 4, it's like 6 stores in the same block, that area.
Same with this one?
The same block. It's one right next to it, and then right in front of that, all of them. Yeah, and one of the plazas, there's a mini market right next to it, it's a mini market. It's called ID grocery store. ID grocery store. ID, D.E.A.L., ID. Right next to it. There's a mini market right there. Right next to it, the other block right there is the 99th store. Right in the corner, this is grocery store right there, that one right there. Right, the other block is another supermarket. Across the street is another supermarket almost. And then on Broadway, we did, uh, Walgreens, uh, Stop and Shop, uh, it wasn't a lot of stuff over there. Right, right by Broadway.
They've never been before this board, so I don't know if that's happening.
They, we got the, uh, condominiums and everything.
It might be, it might be.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of stores in that area, you know. And about the, um, the parking, it's going to be real bad there. It's congested now. I can't even park my car. I gotta park my car way down the street. There's no parking whatsoever over there. And then that's full of kids out there. The, that's, you gotta see them. You gotta check it out and you're gonna see what I'm talking about. Yeah, and it's full of kids. I mean, the parking is real bad out there. I can't even park my car there. And then it's all full of trucks. We got trucks, 18-wheelers, in that same parking lot. It's like, like, like 13, 18-wheelers in that same parking lot. By the parking lot right next to it.
Parking, the unpaid parking lot that's next to it?
Yeah, they got a couple of trucks inside there. And then next across the street to it is like 13, 18-wheeler trucks there, parked there, day and night. Day and nights parked there. So I don't know how I have a good avenue. I see, if you stop out with it now, you're gonna see that full of trucks. It's gonna be full of trucks. Full of trucks.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, where's this, where the 18-wheelers are parked? What, what, what's the location?
Counselor, man, the trucks right next door, right next door to the parking.
What's over the corner?
Uh, right, right by 32 First Street.
32 what?
32 First Street.
First Street?
Yeah, it's all for the, all for the trucks. It's about 13 trucks in there. And then a parking lot next to over there, they be having trucks there too.
Really?
Yeah, all 18-wheelers parked there.
They're parked there overnight, you say?
Overnight, and in the morning, they be there too.
Check that. We're not talking about this front, we're talking about the other front.
The parking is there, the parking next door to it, 32, uh, 2 First Street parking lot. And then this one, they parking, and they go now, they got trucks parked there, right there. They be parking like that.
It's not gonna happen once this one.
Yeah.
If it's improved, I would assume that they'll, I would have to figure that one out. Okay.
Yes. Steve's investor. Steve V N. Esweliy, Steve Young. 32 First Street.
32 First Street.
Yes, sir.
Wasn't that the address you just gave for the car's part, the truck's part?
I'm writing for this first part.
And in relation to the property between Fulton and Franklin, where are the doors? Close to Elizabeth Avenue?
Don't go right across from the school, sir.
Can't be right across from the school, because this property is right across from the school.
Closer to number 100?
Closer to Elizabeth Avenue?
I'm next to Franklin.
Franklin toward Elizabeth Avenue, but the next one, not this property?
Yes, right, it's close to the same property you're speaking about.
Same property has?
Where is the grocery store, the building, supermarket?
I'm confused. Okay, this is 50, 64 First Street, so how can this be 32? 32's gotta be in the next block down toward Elizabeth Avenue.
View cover sheet, Mr. Chairman. If you have a cover sheet, you'll see the next block forward. There's, you have this, or 130?
Is it 30, okay. We're talking about this block between Fulton and Franklin?
Yes, sir.
Talking about between Fulton, Franklin and the next street, or Franklin and Marsh Marshall?
Well, I write between Marshall and Franklin, sir.
The property we're talking about today is between Franklin?
My property.
Your next floor, right next to Cross Street?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I have to say that I also, our business, to put another supermarket right next to mine, which we have so many right now, near one another. I don't see how we make any kind of profit in business. We got groceries there, sir. We got groceries there.
Grocery there?
Yes, sir.
How big is this?
Uh, it's the length of 100 feet by 100, 100 feet by 25.
Any other comments? Someone else in the audience that had any questions or any comments or any questions?
Mr. Zender, somebody is speaking, um, he speaks Spanish and he speaks English. I feel like I'm talking to a person who speaks.
There's no one here to translate for him?
I'll try to make phone calls.
It's not that simple. It has to be, it has to be someone certified to testify at court.
He was telling me he got a lot of say, because he said that this supermarket is real bad.
No, what he said to you is not, you can't, you can't, you can't. That's hearsay, everybody is not, can't say that. All right, anyone else in the audience that has any comments concerning this application? So please come forward. Seeing none, commissioners, much pleasure. This is preliminary, oh, the big group of food application, Mr. Chairman. Motion to accept, to approve the application made by Commissioner Calaver. Second in line. Commissioner West, Vice-Chairman West. Marco Bro.
Councilman Dolman.
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Carvalho.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown. Inspector Mary Garvin. Commissioner Chappell.
Aye.
Vice President Ross. Commissioner.
Aye.